Welcome everyone, thank you for being here this evening. We have an amazing presentation from Aaron Tomlin, Tom Tomlin. And you're going to present on Goal Five: Readiness for College Career and Life. That's just a little topic.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, all the things, right? All right, well, thank you. Thank you for having me again, Aaron Tomlin, Director of Current College Readiness. It's my pleasure to be here talking about Goal Five and how CTE plays a big part in that. Just wanted to start us off with kind of a reminder of the few things that we've got that that lead our way and kind of guide our work. So the first one is our promise, right? It's key, will know values, support every student, helping them graduate, ready to pursue a promising future. And then Goal Five goes hand in hand with that, with every student will successfully navigate the critical transitions in their schooling. And will graduate from high school, ready for college career and post-secondary experiences. And I gotta say, these are the things that CTE does. You'll see it in all of our things, we're bridging the gaps between academics and careers, right? Making sure that our kids are getting there. So this is the core to what the CTE department's about and definitely embrace both of those. All right, want to give a quick intro to a little bit of CTE, just a little background here.
As a female, I don't think I would be learning any of this, things that could help me go into a career.
I'll get myself into the business with having those coding skill assets.
It won't get me set up for like a job at Boeing. If we talk about like doors, these skills open.
With state-of-the-art technology, hands-on labs, and even courses that can burn UW college credits. Set up just like a online textbook where they're actually able to see and touch.
You can have more hands-on experience.
Not sitting around all day.
CTE pathways are your fast track to some of the most exciting and financially rewarding fields of our time.
I want to be an entrepreneur, I want to be a mom and dad.
Right here would make the most of starting.
I say just go for it.
Pick your path, first step in your career starts here.
So that's a little brief intro to what CTE is about, right? You heard stuff about hands-on, you heard stuff about dual credit, getting started, jumpstart, getting ready for what's coming next, right? And so those are the key components to what we do. I want to give an update and I don't know if I've given, I don't think I've given one of these. So I've given an update about some of the things that we have going on, some of the resources that we've got going, what's happening now, what's coming up in the future? And kind of just a general idea of that. And so up on the screen, we've got a QR code and then a link. Click the link for me. We've got a fantastic tool that we use with a lot of our, we've shown it at our career or curriculum showcases. And we share with families and share with our students and we're continuing to build and grow out. Basically, what you see in here is an interactive tool that showcases the programs that we have in CTE. So we've got a wide variety of courses and areas that we offer. And with the idea that we want to open, have open opportunities for our kids in just about any career field that they want to be in. So on this, I wanted to highlight a few things that we've got. So for each program area, except for government and public administration, we're working on that. But each one has, you know, the first one for IT there, they'll have a brief document that says, hey, if you know what you want to do, you're really into, say, computer science and game design. These are the courses that are going to set you up for success and give you that jumpstart on those experiences, those skills, those, the knowledge that's going to be required. Whether you go on to college, you go to a technical school, you go straight into the workforce, take those courses and you're going to be the most ready that you can be. Now, these are recommendation though, so for kids like I don't have that much time in my schedule, they're flexible to where they can take what they can, right? But if I know what I want to do, that's going to be the best course of classes that's going to help me get there, right? In CTE, so we set these out for each of our program area and you'll see there's a couple of different options for each because there's some flexibility within that. So just within IT as an example, we got three different options there. And so really want to help kids see that those options are there and help them make the best choices as they're choosing their classes. All right, we'll go back. Along with that, we also, college and the pieces in between there, that's not the destination, right? Our destination is like, let's get to working someday and let's make sure that we're ready and we're, can be good citizens and, you know, get hired and some of those things. But it doesn't necessarily, like, one of the things that CTE is about, it's not just about you're going to college or you're not. This isn't vocational school where it's like, well, you're not really college bound, so you're going to go on to both classes, right? This is about, no matter what your educational goals are, we've got some careers that are high demand, high pay. They're going to help you so you can be sustainable, right? Whether you're going with a high school diploma or you're going to go on to get a master's degree, there are core, that we design our courses to help provide those opportunities and their careers available for you in the end, right? And so that's kind of the idea. So each one of these has that as well. And then the last piece that I think is my favorite, similar to the video that we watched just a minute ago. Each one of these also has a video of our programs that's got students talking about what they're doing. And one of the things I love about this video, let's go ahead and watch like 30 seconds of it.
Calling all tech savvy students and people fascinated by all things digital. Find your people and your passion along the information technology pathway.
People who are interested in just being creative and getting that coding should take IT classes. My name is Riley Shaw and I got interested in the IT pathway because I was really interested in like the story of gaming.
We can hold that. So the great thing that I love about this is the kids, like it's kids that are in there. And for IT and computer science in particular, having a female student talking about the power and what she's into is a huge piece as well. And so I love that we were able to get, you know, a variety of students in these videos and showcasing the cool things that they're doing and talking about it. It's not the adults talking about because we know kids, they want to hear it from their peers, not, not us old people. So it's, it's great that we have those for each of our. Speaking for myself, that's just me, not, not any of you. Yeah. But the videos, we have one for each of the programs or a few, if you're talking about like Get Family Consumer Science has two different, because there are two different pathways in there with the end and training and then the hospitality tourism. So they've got a couple there. And like I said, we're working on the government and public administration, so that's, that's coming soon. We just started those programs this year, so we're working on that. Up at the top, the big three things, I talked about this a little bit already, but big pieces that we're talking about with CTE, we're giving free college credits. So if they get a C or better in a lot of our classes, they can get college credit while they're with us, right? There's hands-on learning, so we're not just talking about this stuff, they're out there using it. So I know some of you may have seen, there was a recent thing about the anatomage boards and some of our medical classes. We're in there using tools that are industry relevant, industry level, that are going to set our kids up for success as they move on and go into that actual world. We're using the same drilling and riveting tools that they're using at Boeing. We're using the same things so that we are replicating as much as we can within a safe environment that's, that's perfect for our high school kids. That experience that's going to replicate what they'll see later on. And then we also have industry certificates that are things that say, hey, I have some skills, I got this certificate that means something. So we've got things like Adobe certifications, Microsoft certifications, first aid. A ton of different certifications that our kids can get. And so those are three key pieces that kind of set that, set our kids up for success, no matter what they decide to do after, after they leave our, our door. So, all right, we can go back to the show. And so new classes, this year we had a few new classes. So we started off our JROTC programs at both schools. Sumner's been going year long and Bonnie Lake just opened up here for second semester with us able to get some portables in and get some space for them to be in. And they're already underway and having a great time about it. I just met with the teacher the other day and it's fantastic to see him just jumping right into it and getting going. We got Core Plus at Bonnie Lake High School, so that's our manufacturing program. We had it at Sumner High School, it's going great. We're state champ still as far as the, the team that went and competed at the state level. And so we were like, we need this opportunity for Bonnie Lake as well because this is too good to pass up. And it looks a little different just because of our space constraints, but we're still making sure that they're getting a quality experience that replicates what they'll see when they go into the workforce and manufacturing. We've got Intro to Programming through Video Game Design and that should be two. And so it's in addition to Video Game Design One. And in this one, they start to program things that are, go into virtual reality. And so pretty amazing thing where they got the headsets, they can put those on, they're making it, they're not just playing in those worlds, but they're actually designing those things in that class. And so that class just kicked off this second semester also, so we're excited to see as those kids get things started. I think they might have some things in the STEM fair, if you come there, you might be able to see some of the cool stuff that they've been working on. Sports Medicine, Bonnie Lake High School, we got a rock in this year. We're hoping to have it at Sumner High School eventually, just have to get the staffing and kind of build the capacity there, but it's pretty amazing. Kids are getting that experience in those health science fields that's super needed and, and it's also, you know, just really cool to see them working in and they're practicing taping and they're practicing, you know? And also be out on the fields and get to observe some of the things that our athletic trainers are doing as well. And then the last one that we started this year, cybersecurity, which is at both schools, really awesome opportunity for us, our kids to get into some, a really relevant topic in, in the IT industry. So we're excited for our kids to get in there. I know they were already, I popped into class and they were already talking about like, we've already had to talk about what is ethical use of cybersecurity practices look like? And, you know, and talking about some of those things, but other kids, the, the great thing about it, I was talking to kids, I was like, are you interested in this field? And they're like, you know, I wasn't really at first, but as I look at this more and as I look at the career opportunities, like this might not be a bad gig. And so it's pretty cool to hear that from the kids, you know, right out of their mouths, just impromptu and, and they were kind of able to articulate that. And the new courses, next year we're bringing in translation interpretation. One of the classes, the idea behind this is kind of build on our heritage Spanish classes so that our students can leave and set off their superpower of being dual lingual or dual bilingual, sorry. And so we're starting it off with Spanish and English because our teachers that we have are able to, they can translate and interpret in both those languages. But we'd love to expand that in the future to other languages as well. JROTC, second year of classes for them, so just continuing in that, it'll be a four-year progression once we get to that fourth year. And then ASL, we have ASL one right now at Bonnie Lake High School. It's not CTE, we're bringing it over to CTE and then we're going to add in ASL two. And that way we're again, giving those kid, those skills and the experiences that can kind of prepare them to be interpreters or to work in environments and use those skills in a professional environment. So really excited about all of these, it's a lot to bring on new courses, but we want to make sure we're staying relevant and, and doing what's best for our kids. So, all right, let's talk about some other things that are working well. So one of the things, these are numbers from last year, so I talked about the industry recognized search. These are things that actually mean something, you put it on a resume. We had 980 of them earned by students last year and I think we'll have more than that this year. So that's 980 things that are like, yes, that's another line on your resume that means something. Down at the bottom, we got the 2086 students earned dual credit. So by taking our courses, it's 280 or 2086, excuse me, credits that they can earn, they just have to go in and claim them and they're, they've got a head start on their college careers. And those are all through right now, Pierce College, Bates or Clover Park Tech, for the most part, we have a couple others with like Renton Tech, but most, majority are there. But they also, a lot of them will transfer to other colleges if, you know, if, if they're going somewhere else. So really awesome opportunity, free credits, pretty, pretty big deal and they don't have to leave our building. They are in our building, they still get the normal college or a high school experience and they're getting those college credits while doing it. We had 18 students offer careers at Boeing last year, straight out of our programs, a lot of them without even having to interview. They did the application and because they were in our programs and because we're doing such high quality work in those programs, they said, yes, we want you, please, and send us more. So I'm sure we will have even more in the future and we'll continue to grow that number and continue to grow that program now that we've got it at Bonnie Lake High School as well. So we're super excited and we also had, I think, two or three last year, students that went into the Boeing paid internship over the summer, a six-week internship, which for juniors or sophomores, that's an awesome opportunity for them to get even more of a head up, a heads up before, before their seniors. So really awesome opportunity. And then on our teaching side, we talked about the Grow Your Own project and kind of what we're trying to do at Teaching Academy. And we had 27 students that passed the parent educator test, meaning they can leave our doors, go get a job as a parent educator. And I can tell you, our district would love to have more parent educators or parent educator subs or, and so we're able, we're getting those kids to that point where they can do that as soon as they leave us and hopefully come back to us. And then we also had 16 students that were seniors that they, they committed to being, becoming educators once they leave, you know, and go to college and do their things and come back. And so we're hoping to be able to build that grow our own so that our teaching population looks like our kids because we grew them, right? We helped them get there and so really awesome opportunities. Yeah, just our kids are doing great things and our adults are helping them get there. So it's, it's been fantastic. Other things that are working well, Career Day, so we had a career day in November. We had about 60 speakers, guest speakers that came in and talked to our kids at Sumner High School this year. And so kids got to go to four different sessions throughout the day. It was a fantastic opportunity for them to hear about different careers and ask questions and see somebody that actually does it, right? And so really cool opportunity, next year it'll be Bonnie Lake, we go back and forth because we only have so many people in the community and taxing them for two buildings would be a bit much. But Career Day every, every year is, is just fantastic. Those kids go away and they've got a little bit different idea, either of something that they really didn't know about or something they wanted to learn more about or something they're like, ah, that doesn't sound like me, right? Any way that they go, those are great opportunities for them to hear about careers and hear from adults that are doing it. So it was fantastic. We have a career readiness board, so we're in the middle of reviewing their applications. They just closed here last, this last weekend, I think. And so I think we got 60 plus students that are applying for that. And basically what it means is students do an application, they do a, they turn in a resume and then they'll do interviews and they have, they've taken at least two or more CTE credits. So they've got some skills and knowledge and stuff because they've taken our classes, but even above that, they've done some things to show, yes, I can do an application, I can do a resume, I can interview. And then if they pass through those things, then at graduation, they get to wear a special cord that kind of signifies like, you did this. So super excited for that. Like I said, we're in the midst of it right now, we'll be doing interviews here soon. We've also created some partnerships. So one of the great partnerships we've had this year, kind of talking about bridging that gap is with a group called COPE and they work with MultiCare. And basically what it allows students to do is while they're in high school, 16 to 18 or beyond, actually, students can go in and they can get clinical hours working in healthcare facilities alongside healthcare professionals. So they go in there and they, I think it's somewhere around 200 hours that they get in this and that counts towards if they later on are going to go on to work in the health field. And it's really awesome opportunity, they get exposed to different departments. And if they're the 16 to 17 year olds, they have some limitations, obviously, maturity wise, there are some things that they more observing, but if they're 18 or over, they can really get in there and they're working hand in hand with some of the staff that's there. Either way, they're getting in there and they're a part of the staff. So it's been a really awesome partnership we're working on creating. We've got, I want to say like 15 plus students that have applied and are getting into that program, which is pretty amazing. I know we've had a couple that have done it on their own in past years, but this year it's really ramped up. And so we're excited to see those kids pursue the careers because we know in the world we need those. And so really awesome to see that partnership kind of come together and get those kids this opportunities. And then we've got a career panel and mock interviews that we're working on. So again, more exposure, let's let our kids see what's out there. And so talking with adults and getting that practice and mock interviews is something we're also working on continuing to do with our kids and kind of build the, the, just their experiences. So that when they go out and they're either applying for college or they're interviewing for a job or they're interviewing for something else, they've got some experience, they've talked with some adults, they know some things and can, can be as ready as we can get them. All right, next, here is for opportunities for improvement. Now with all that said, we got lots of great stuff going on, right? But we always, my mindset is we can keep getting better, right? And so each year we look at our data and we look at the CTE completer data in particular for, for the CTE department. We have the CLNA, the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, we brought by you the board, when was it, October, I want to say, that, that had some of this data in it. But we really focus on our CTE completers and these are students that took two or more credits in one program area. So if you remember back to the infographic there, if they took two or more credits in one of those areas, then they're considered a CTE completer. And so we looked at the data that was from those CTE completers and it's a subset of our overall population, but some things that came out of it. We noticed across the board, and this isn't just CTE completers, this is across the district, but also across the state, it's across everywhere, let's be honest. Math scores could be better, right? So that's an area we're going to continue to work on, that's, we know there's something there that we, we want to play a part in it however we can, right? Our scores for our multilingual students, they're coming in with some barriers, right? And we want to make sure that we can help them improve and that's across the board, whether it's through their English, whether it's through their math, whether it's through our content areas, we want to help support them and kind of get them, help them to do better on those, those assessments and help them do better in the scores that way. And then our non-traditional enrollment. So we have what the, the national kind of definition of non-traditional enrollment is. Enrollment in courses where the industry has 25% or less of one gender or the other in that field. So for example, computer science, there's 25% or less women in computer science in the industry. And so that's considered a non-traditional field. And so as we talk about our classes, our goal is to have equal representation where we've got more females in those classes. And we also take it a little bit step further as we're talking about other forms of equity. So we, we want our, our populations in our classes to represent our population as a whole. CTE classes should not just be for a certain subset of students, it should be for everyone. And so our goal goes beyond what the national data says, we want ours to be representative. Our computer science classes should look like those kids that are in the halls, all of those kids in the halls. They should look like those kids everywhere that you're seeing, right? And so that's our goal, we're going to continue to work on that, that's not a, we're going to fix it next year. We have some, some other things outside of us that the pressures of like, ah, boys are good at this or girls are good at this or, you know, there are various things like that that we're working against. But I think we've got some good strategies and we're, we're going to keep pushing because we want, we want that. Our, our classes should represent what we've got in front of us. So here's some action steps to kind of work toward that. First off, more family and community outreach and advertising our programs. So the first thing is getting that knowledge out there. You saw the infographic, that's just one example of things that we've, we've been working on to get that information out to families and, and especially some of those families that, you know, wouldn't typically have their kids go into a certain program or another. We want them to know what it's about and hear from other kids that are speaking about the great things that are going on there, right? We're also working, we've upped our social media game this year, we're making sure we're going to do some mailer. Hopefully the end of this month, we'll send out a mailer to our families so that they can see the link and get some more information. But really we want people to know about what we do because that's, that's the first step, right? Next, as far as the math scores, we're not going to stop and just do math all the time because we got content too. But when it fits, we want to be really intentional about how we apply math to what we're doing. So there are some classes like financial algebra, yeah, they're doing a lot of math because that's the core and they're applying it to real world though. Whereas in our, say Core Plus classes, it might, we might be getting into using precision tools and measurements, right? We might be getting into some topics and really being intentional about those, converting fractions is something that our kids even in high school still struggle with. So they're working and just being intentional and taking that extra minute to teach those concepts is where we're going to kind of lean into that. We want to be intentional about recruiting non-traditional students to our programs and a lot of this is starting early and building up, right? So if we can start talking to them at elementary school and start showing them that these things are awesome and they're coming, that's going to be even better. So we're working on some of the videos like what we showed for our programs there, for our middle school programs and that we're hoping to have by the end of the year so we can share those with elementary school kids. And, and I'm planning on going to the elementaries to share, hey, these are the cool things you got in store for you. So really cool opportunities, but we want to be intentional and we also, you know, the kids that are in our class, we want to make sure that we're, we're keeping them, we're keeping them interested and we're, we're making sure that they see the relevancy of what they're doing. We're working on getting more teaching strategies to help support our multilingual students. So one of our teachers, we have that's in CTE, he last year got trained, it's called PSYOP and they do a lot of strategies that help support multilingual students. Doesn't only help multilingual students, it helps all students really, but they're really specific that, that will help those multilingual students in particular. And so he got the training last year and this summer, we're going to try and get him to be a trainer so that he can support our CTE teachers and kind of use that lens as we're talking about those. But then also support the district and our secondary schools as well. So we're excited to have him kind of take that on and he was totally on board, I was like, yes, Jason, you're my man. So he's, yeah, we're excited to have that so that he can kind of infuse that as we, as we do our training for CTE, but then also in the building and as a district as a whole. So, and then we want to create more direct hire commitment opportunities for our seniors. So I talked about Boeing, I talked about the commitment from our Teaching Academy students. We're, we're working, this year we've been building up that COPE, but we'd like to continue to grow that and beyond just those three program areas, right? We want to make sure we're bridging, truly bridging the gap between academics and careers. That's our goal, we want our kids to know where they're going, what opportunities are for them and, and how to get around the barriers that might be there in their places. So that's our continued goal, we're trying to build that up. So I think that is, yeah, any questions, suggestions, other thoughts?
Aaron, could you talk about the tour in a couple weeks?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So what day is it, is it the 21st? Yeah, so on the 21st, we're going to do a tour. We'd love to have you all there. We're going to take, start up at Bonnie Lake High School and our kind of goal is, is to see what we've got going on. So we're going to go to the classes and hopefully have a few students be able to pop out and tell us about what's going on, what the class is about. And we'll get to as many classes as we can there, if there are any in particular, you're like, I want to see that, we can, we can make sure we, we visit those. And then we'll pop over to Sumner High School and we'll continue, we'll do the same thing there and we'll be able to see all the great things our kids are doing, right? We're still a little early in the semester, so there might be some where they're doing some entry level stuff, but there are also some year-long classes where they've been going for a while now and you, you'll get to see some really cool things. And I'm, I'm excited to hear the students talk about their programs and kind of sell what they're doing because that's the best, let's be honest. I could, I could talk all day, but it's not as good as just having a kid come up and say those same things. So I'm excited to see that and have you come and see that. I know our General Advisory Council for our, our CTE department will be joining us, some of them will be joining us as well. So they can come along and, and see what our programs are doing and so super excited, anytime. I, I love, this is my favorite part is talking about the amazing things that our kids and our teachers and our programs are doing for our, to get kids ready for doing what our promise says, right? Ready for the next steps, so.
I love your energy and passion. Do you ever present with Kelly Dunn?
Might be too much.
And I think too, when you talk about Boeing and speaking to elementary, you know, just your passion and enthusiasm really gets kids engaged. And if they're engaged in something that opens, you know, like you said, kids weren't even sure that they really wanted this, but now that they're in it, they're like, oh my goodness, this might be a really great path for me. And creating those opportunities is such a gift, so any questions or comment?
I just like, I like the fact that you're getting out and even to the elementary level and advertising this because I think this, this has been happening, but it is a shift in how we get kids ready for post-high school. And if I look back at my experience in high school, you didn't really plan high school until you got there and then you open the course catalog and you're like, okay, I'm going to take that, I'm going to take that. But I think your, your plan to advertise to the parents at the elementary level, that there are even courses coming to the middle school level, that they need to start thinking about how they can use the tool, that tool looks great, that they can get in and navigate and start much earlier. Because I know having kids, things sneak up on you because it goes really quick. And so I think getting out in front of the elementary parents is going to be critical to the future success and growth of these programs.
So just to piggyback on what Kevin said, one of the first conferences we went to, and this was the, the national one, there was a professor from Harvard, do you remember that at all? Okay, so anyway, he was just talking about CTE actually, and it was mesmerizing. And what he said is that it's best to kind of start that sort of knowledge, you're, you're planting the seed when the kids are about in the fifth grade. And so I think what you're saying, Kevin, is that if the most, the more exposure, the better it is for them to kind of come into the middle school and high school and be prepared to know what they might want. But that being said, I also wanted to let you know that I've been on board for what, 10 years now? And I just see how CTE has just leaped forward. It was always good in the beginning, but now it's just what you're doing and you're planning. I'm, I'm just really impressed with that, so thank you for that. Then I do have a question, sorry it took so long. The question is, is the videos that we saw on the screens, was that something that any of the classes did or did you do that yourself to produce them?
So we, we've, in the past, we've done some that have been student created and when we're working with our high school students, they're still learning, right? And so we were like, we want something that's polished, that is also not going to be added on the teacher's plate. And so we really tried to do that, we went through our, a company called Hemisphere and they did, they've done great work for the district in other ways before. And so we've partnered with them to, to make these videos as well because we want something, again, crisp, clean and, and yeah, they did an amazing job. Yeah, we're really, really happy with it.
I'm sure the kids would do just as well.
They, they would do well as well, yeah, yeah. We have some, they have more resources than our, you know, and the time. We have some, they have more resources than our, you know, and the time and yeah, yeah. So it's, thank you.
I've got a few and then I'll just take one at a time. Actually, I have four, but I've already answered one of them, so it'll be down to three. I too like the fact that you guys have been pushing down to the elementary school to get them, get them excited before they even get to fifth grade. I I I do think they're even going lower to the fifth grade to get them jazzed up and I appreciate it. I've noticed it. You had said something there, maybe it's just a a conversation piece, but it it struck me and that was uh, you know, you're trying to teach kids uh how to get around barriers. And that's part of this. Uh are there some examples that you can share with us?
Yeah, yeah. Um so one of them, I'll I'll use say Coke for example. Sometimes it's hard to get in and know where to start getting into healthcare fields, right? And so what we've done is kinda take some of those barriers out of the way for them. So there's a tuition piece that comes along with being a part of the Coke because they've got the administrative side. And we made sure to take that off of their plate so that students are not paying to go do that. Um and with that, um they're then able to go in and work side by side with some of those people that are doing the jobs. Um one of the barriers that I see for a lot of our kids is that uncertainty if they're ready, uncertainty if they can do this job, uncertainty if they're okay. And by working hand in hand, side by side with those those adults doing those jobs in those professional fields, we take that barrier out of the way. They have that confidence, I can go there and do that. The same thing can be said about Boeing, for example, like we're connecting them directly with that employer. They are set up, they know the date when they're gonna show up and they're employed. We helped them fill out their applications to make sure that they were confident in what they were doing. We also have the guest speakers come in regularly to kinda talk about, yeah, we do that, we do that, you're doing exactly the right things. And so the more we can make those connections, like the networking and the people part of it is some of the biggest barriers that I see. Um and then there are those aspects also of of that who you know as well. So making those connections with those, we have guest speakers in every single one of our CTE classes. Um and one of the things we're working on with our career specialists is we're gonna look at some of the how do you get to that post-secondary, all the post-secondary options? And what are the steps to get there? Because a lot of times, say, my family is never my family had, but if my family hadn't ever gone to college, nobody had, right? How do I know even where to start, right? And so we wanna make as clear and as and as outlined as we can to take away those barriers. Um Sumner High School had a great event here last week, I wanna say, where they had a multilingual FAFSA night where they were able to kinda take some of those barriers out of the way. We're gonna continue to build that out for all of our options. So if you wanna get into an apprenticeship, what are the steps to get there? What's that look like and sound like? And we wanna create that model. And so we're working on that right now. Um but uh a lot of the things that our teachers are kinda sharing, um some of the barriers like, I don't have enough experience, I don't have the certification. We're getting those kids that experience in the those certifications now. Um and so uh can give them some of that confidence. There's still work to be done. We're not perfect, we're not, you know, uh and there's a lot to to overcome, but definitely taking some of those barriers away with the people side, with the certification side, with the financial side, where we can, where it makes sense. Um and and just anything that comes up, we will, we'll also make it clear of how do you get there? Cuz that's that for some kids is like the biggest question. They don't even know where to start. So that's our hope.
That's a great que- great answer to a tough question. I almost expected to see Erin Headless. You answered so well tells me you've thought about this really long and hard and doing the work. So thank you. I do have a couple more, but.
Oh, I just, so as the official old guy, you know, I was thinking about this. So I have about thirty years of watching Sumner School District CTE. And I wanna thank you, Michelle, Sharon, Sarah, Ron Moncrief. And I got to work with all these people. And the the neat thing is, is watching the growth of where it started and even though there's one, two, three, four, five of you, the the vision has been very similar and the progress has been consistent to this. And it just is so exciting to see the things. Very excited about the kids that can go right to work and that's, that is fantastic. On the opposite end, I have a freshman at Washington State granddaughter who is already into the whatever business club she's into and about ten others and is rocking and rolling because of the background she's got. So um the last one is I uh was recently contacted by a former student and uh it was interesting cuz he was my heavy, heavy Goth student. And he told me about some of the struggles he had in that. But the classes he took, especially some in CTE, led him to get into entry level. He is now a um is now overseeing maintenance and operations for a major school district in our state. He started off as a custodian uh assistant and worked his way up, but he was able to talk to me about, here are the classes I took, here are the teachers who uh reinforce those things, and here's the skills I had that I was able to apply all the way through. So congratulations to you guys and I am old. Well, I've been very fortunate to inherit really strong program. Uh I did not build this myself. I could definitely say that. We've had very uh very strong programs and and I'll just continue to do what I can and keep pushing forward. So thank you.
Anybody else before I ask another question?
I have a question and maybe just more of a connection to you as you both were talking, you know, not so much in terms of um removing barriers, but just creating opportunities. You know, beyond just the experiences that they're they're having with tools and programs and things, but like you touched on those certificates, you know, you're right, they can put those on college applications or work applications. And right away, that gives them a little bit of a boost. You know, practicing a resume and practicing an interview, those things are hard for kids, especially some kids who don't have that confidence. And so giving them the opportunity to practice that gives them a boost. So um I just think those real-life applications of that practice and then before they launch is so valuable as well.
Well, one of the things I like about the presentations we get and and what this district also does besides saying all the good things, we do look at uh opportunities for improvement. And your top one there was math scores. Um and and this was after you talked to the CTE completers. So did they give you some ideas for how to improve those math scores?
Um so when it, when we look at the data, that's the part that we have to kinda interpret, right? So we have to look at those and and I have to balance, like I kinda mentioned, we've got our, we've got our CTE content, right? We wanna make sure that they're able to drill rivet, they're able to do the taping or rapid, we wanna make sure that they've got those skills, right? Um but we also wanna help and support when those things are relevant. And so we've, I've worked with our our CTE kinda leadership team. We have a few teachers on the team and then the people at district office that we work together. And we've met and talked about this a few times of like, what's manageable with the the content that we already have? And and how can we do this in a way that it's gonna make sense? So it's not just like out of left field, here's some math that you're like, whoa, kids like, I'm not, I'm in the wrong place, right? We wanna do it in a way where it's applied. And so uh that's been, that's the piece that we're still working on is is figuring out what's the best way to kinda get those pieces. There have been the messaging like, when it comes up, if you need any support in in teaching those math concepts, let us know. Like, we've got some people, I used to teach math, we know other, you know, I'll reach out and I'll get resources as we need to. Uh but the bigger idea is just taking that extra second to talk about that math concept or use that terminology that's already being used in those math classes. And that way it makes that connection. Um I remember, for example, when I was in the classroom, I I, we were talking about gear ratios, so how two gears match up and one gear runs a little bit faster because it's, you know, different size. And and we were talking about that. And at the same time, one of our math teachers was also teaching ratios to the seventh, the eighth graders. And she came to me, she's like, have you been talking about ratios? And I was like, yeah, we do gear ratios all the time. And we're talking about how that, you know, it applies to machine. And those kids that were in my class doing robotics and talking about gear ratios, they were flying past everybody else that was just talking about ratios in in isolation. And so it was a pretty amazing example. Just one where it was like, I wasn't doing anything crazy outside of just showing that application and really highlighting, here's ratios, guys, you're doing it right now. And 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 just talking and applying that. They were able to get a little deeper. So when we have those opportunities like that, makes a huge difference in their learning in their math classes, but also adds that extra layer of like, why? Why does that work? What is that? Why do I need to know that? Also is another place that so many times when I was a math teacher, students would say, why do I need to know this? And yeah, you know, they get that answer with the things that we were doing. So trying to be intentional about that as much as we can, um while also not just making it another math class, right?
Yeah, I took a lot of shop class. I would not want to take another math class. So I appreciate that answer as well.
Anyone else before I?
I just love how you're taking away this 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 nomer that's always been there when kids take math, which is, I'm never gonna use this again. I can't, no, why am I doing this? I'm never gonna use it again. So I, I love that you're taking that away uh and showing them that, how they will use it in in ways that they can excel at it and make it exciting. So it isn't just in isolation that's actually real world. So that's pretty cool.
Last question. Maybe you have an answer, maybe you don't. Uh this is on the non-traditional enrollment. That's always a tough one. It it really is. I get it. Um and I I I applaud the effort because it takes time. Um and I always, from my perspective, I always wanna hear that, okay, we're gonna try to increase uh from non-traditional enrollment. Sometimes I go, ah. In the sense, not that it's not good, but that it sometimes can go overboard. Right. To so that guys all of a sudden start to feel maybe unwelcome uh in the in the shop class. Or if if it's a female-dominated uh industry where females might start to feel like, are we not wanted in this class anymore? So that's my hesitancy. Um I know you're not doing that.
No.
But what are some approaches you're taking to to achieve that?
Uh so I think I I touched on it a little bit. So my goal, even if na- nationwide, the 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 metrics, they want it to be a certain percentage, but my goal is that those classes match our student population. Um it's not heavy in one or the other. It matches what we've got. We've got a, it's like forty-eight to fifty-one percent ratio in our district. That's what our classes should be. Um and the same should go for our students with IEPs, our multilingual students. Those classes should be representative of the kids in our schools. And so uh I don't know that it it's necessarily pushing out one group or the other for this purpose. It's helping them to realize that they fit in all of them. And so that's the message that I train. It's it's a welcome, everybody is welcome here is that message that I really wanna try and send and that I I I see our teachers doing. Um and and we're continuing to do that by building those with the multilingual strategies that we're bringing in to help those students that are coming in um with very low English proficiency. We wanna help them be successful too, right? And by creating that environment, by doing some of the work that we're doing with circles and having those conversations and building communities. I think that's gonna open up to a variety of our students so that they feel like they're a part of it and not just someone that's kinda hidden in the corner. Uh and so I think our district as a whole, I I can't just say just the CTE department, but I think um our district as a whole is doing a lot to make sure that our classes, no matter what class it is, is a place where students can feel welcome. And are we perfect? Are we there? No, we're not. But we wanna keep making those gains, keep making those pushes forward to get our kids to where they can feel comfortable. And even if social norms outside of our schools say, eh, that's not really for, yes, it is. And and that's what the message of, I know I'll keep pushing and I keep hearing our teachers kinda getting behind and uh it's a matter, you know, we've got work to do and and we've got work to do as a world, you know, as an entire planet of people. We've got some work to do there as well, but um we'll keep doing what we can in our classes to to make them as welcoming as possible, whether it's greeting at the door, it's doing the circles, it's using special strategies that help kids feel like it's okay, showing videos, showing kids that and adults that are in, that look like them in their, those those materials to see you can be successful here any way possible. We can make that welcoming. That's that's our goal, so.
Are you or have you thought of that work with the younger kids? And I ask that because there's still a lot of our kids either by sex, by race, by whatever, that parents pigeonhole their kids. And that takes a long time to break those those thoughts and that. Is there work that that you're looking at doing with the parents of those younger kids on the way up?
So I haven't thought of parents, but one of the things that I was fortunate to be a part of as we built our STEM programs at our elementary schools, I was really fortunate to be a part of that and see it and help grow it and make it, you know, have a part in what it is today. Um and one of the fantastic things that we do in our district that many districts do not do is our kids are getting, all kids are getting STEM education from a very young age. And so things like computer science, it's not foreign to our girls or our students of color or our students with IEPs or i- it's not. They're seeing it, they're doing it, they're have a part in it. And they can make that decision for themselves if it is or isn't for them. Um but parents would be a great, that's that's something I haven't really thought about. Um I think some of the marketing materials get a little bit to that. Um we see the the girl in manufacturing, right? Um or the uh there was one also in a female in com- uh computer science, which are two fields that are non-trad. Um if you saw the Teaching Academy videos, see males, right? So by showing that and seeing that, um and students that look like that again, um but that's a great, great idea. I'm done to think on that. At our first that one with parents, cuz you're right, you you know, a lot of especially our middle school students, that's that's, they're getting driven by parents, right? And uh and so, yeah, it's a good point.
I think it's interesting too that um, you know, when someone decides to become a teacher and you and you look at the type of people that go into the education field as a career, by and large, I'm gonna say a hundred percent of them are the type of people that are gonna make all kids feel welcome. And and if more kids wanna join, you know, their classes, their groups, that that's not gonna push out. They're not the type of person that would then push somebody out of a class to make room for someone else. So that comes back to the type of people that that enter into their career space and being an educator and and being inclusive and making sure that no one ever is pushed out just for a quota or those sorts of things. So I think we're safe in that, in that area and in any school district, that I don't think that's ever gonna be the case.
Yeah. Erin, you answered three hard questions very well. Thank you. And I liked how you put in people with IEPs. Um that was great. Thank you.
That's nice. Same thing, Paul. I loved your answer. Basically, you belong here, right? Come join us and I, that sums it up beautifully. So thank you. All right. You did well. A solo presentation. It was good, good. And you didn't need anybody else.
No, I I had my kids, they talked up there.
Always good to let the kids talk. Especially when you can edit it. All right. Um any board discussion this evening?
I just wanna share. So I am with this social group once a week. There's about twelve of us. All two folks are from uh retired Boeing employees and they're, we let them in. Both of them happen to live in our district. Uh others are assistant, superintendent, superintendents, former principals, that kind of thing. And somehow we always vow that we're never gonna talk about schools in the afternoon. And discussion this afternoon, while it was nice and gorgeous down at High Cedars, was um we started talking about fads and trends in schools and stuff. And one of the uh, he was former su- superintendent pointed out, he said, you know, one of the things I always admired down in your district is you guys didn't jump around. It started with Donald and it's kinda worked its way through is there are things that we worked on twenty-seven years ago that we are still going along. Now we changed approaches, we used most current research and those kinda things. But he said, I just always admired that you guys just stuck with it and just kept going. And when you got to really good at something, you kept getting better at it. And I just thought that was really cool what you shared.
Super cool. Thanks for sharing. Anyone else?
No, I think Erin, I enjoyed the presentation and I find it great. And I've been out to events, like the STEM fair at uh Lakewood, saw you like you were judging the mousetrap cars. I I think if you can take the mousetrap cars and do the competition down at the elementary school, you'd have even more people excited about it. So I I think you guys have great ideas. I've liked the implementation and I remember back when you were still teaching up in up at Lakewood, uh you had a passion for it then and you still do now. So thank you.
That makes me think, is the robotics competition happening at Bonnie Lake High School again? Has it happened?
They'll have uh, so robotics, they'll host one of the competitions. I wanna say it's mid-March. I don't remember the date exactly.
So we'll, we'll wanna make sure we get that date.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. And STEM fair is coming up, the district STEM fair is coming up. And there will be robotics from all levels will be there. So you'll see the elementary, you'll see the middle school, and then you'll see the high school as well from both high schools. So.
All right. No other discussion this evening? All right. Thank you so much. Um and I guess with that, have a good night.